Agenda review session will begin now, followed immediately by the US City Council meeting of November 5th, 2025. We have approval minutes, report correspondents to our city clerk, we have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading, number one, an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1020, handicap parking section, Section 120, 010, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, adding 101 Wright Place, 184 Fulton Street, and 10 Laurel Place. Number two is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 3, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 328, fee schedule, Section 328, 120, parks and recreation fees in regards to updates. We have ordinances on first reading, number one is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1020, handicap parking section, 1020, 010, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, adding 238 Towne Street and 456 Ferms and Avenue. Number two is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 17, zoning in regards to several proposed amendments. Number three is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 16, land development code, in regards to several proposed amendments. And number four is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 2, administration and personnel, in regards to maximum development fees. We have resolutions, 154, number one is to approve agenda amendments, two approve payroll, three authorize refund, redeem tax scale certificates, four approve amendment resolution R. 122420, additional amount of $50,000 with the end of U.S. healthcare middle town. Five is approve amendment resolution R. 082564, the reason to modify sender name, the annual inter- 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 upper role communication system. Number six is approve amendment resolution R. 092532, change order number eight for $5,400, and change order number nine for $114,427, with Sandra Noon doing business as Dumar Contracting for Jones Avenue and Elleran Street Order Systems improvements. Number seven is approve award contract with ESO, solutions incorporated for proprietary software for the fire department. Number eight is approve amendment resolution R. 112428, additional amount of $36,080 with suburban consulting engineering, for engineering services for Rockford Village Water Main. Number nine is to approve amendment resolution R. 062566, additional amount of $52,200 with Garden State Laboratories Incorporated. Number 10 is to approve resolution authorizing applications to the Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone, we see authority for the first generation enterprise zone assistance for the home newsgroove improvement project. Number 11 is referral to the planning board for amendments to Title 17 zoning. 12 referral to the planning board for amendments to Title 16, land development code. 13 approve resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreement with the Millices County Office on Aging and Disabled Services. Number 14 approve resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreement with the Millices County Office on Aging and Disabled Services. 15 approve resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreement with the Millices County Office on Aging and Disabled Services. Number 16 is a resolution regarding the Jersey State Immigration Trust Act. Number 17 is a resolution certifying review for 2024 annual audit. Number 18 is authorized corrective action plan. 19 is a resolution authorizing budget transfers, 2025 municipal budget. Number 20 is to establish a change fund, change fund in the Recreation Department. 21 approve amendment resolution R. 062331, additional amount of $245,000 for 2025, $160,000 for 2026, $85,000 with Horizon Blue Cross and Blue Shield for dental plan. 22 is authorize tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax utility accounts. 23 authorize refund to Seth Duran against 2025 taxes in a total amount of $1,014.58. 24 authorize refund to Livingston Manor against utility account, number 26850, 100 Livingston Avenue, uh, block, 49 Lot 1101. We then have 25 is approved ABC liquor license renewals for 2025, 26. 26 is approved ABC liquor license renewals for 2019, 2020. 27 is approved ABC liquor license renewals for 2020, 21. 28 approved ABC liquor license renewals for 21, 22. 29 approved ABC liquor license renewals for 22, 23. 30 approved ABC liquor license renewals for 23, 24. 31 approved liquor license renewals, liquor license for 24, 25. And 32 approved ABC liquor license renewals for 25, 26. 33 is requested by the Rutgers Cancer Institute, request of use of city sidewalk for me, Great American Smokeout. 34 approve request for sidewalk use, street closing and use of city property, requested by the Restaurant Guys LLC for a New Year's Eve event. 35 authorizing support for assistance for development, planning, community and economic development with the North Jersey Transportation Authority for the complete street plan. 36 approve Title 39 agreement between Chagun Real Estate and the city of New Brunswick, the New Brunswick Police Department enforcement of motor vehicle traffic regulation. 37 authorize submission of application grant to Governor's Council on Substance Use, substance use disorder. 38 approve amendment resolution R. 062570, change order number 1A, with Drive Act contracting cooperation for the Rockford Village Water Main replacement project, Phase 8. 39 approve amendment resolution R. 092559, change order number 2, with NDB Construction Incorporated for the Bebo Park, Bebo and restaurant, and restroom renovations. Number 40 approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure requested by Maxim Crane Works, place a crane on Patterson Street. 41 approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure requested by Maxim Crane Works, place a crane on Somerset Street. 42 approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure requested by Tristroughs LLC, Light Path Fiber Group, supply fiber optic cable for the New Brunswick Police Department. Number 43 is authorize application and execution of grant agreement for local freight impact fund, the Jersey Department of Transportation. 44 approve amendment resolution R. 022547, change order number 1 for final credit with Down and Earth Landscapping Incorporated. 45 approve amendment resolution R. 0725, Board 2, change order number 2, with Paxman this Enterprise LLC for fabricating and selling group access matters at the public library. 46 approve amendment resolution R. 032567, additional amount of $238,730 with French and Berillo Associates for consulting engineering services. 47 approve award contract with Flock Group Incorporated doing business as Flock Safety with the automatic license plate readers. 48 approve authorization to advertise, furnish and deliver 2, 2025 for newer Ford Mavericks, Excel, and their equivalent for the water utility. 49 approve amendment resolution R. 062567, additional amount of $12,000 with French and Berillo Associates for engineering services for Rockford Village Water Main replacement project, Phase 7. 50 approve amendment of resolution R. 072507, additional amount of $27,337.50 with Triad Advisory Services Incorporated doing business as Triad Associates for Community Development Block Bank Program. 51 approve authorization to advertise, furnish and deliver 3, 2025 for newer Ford Escape, or equivalent for the water utility. 52 approve amendment resolution R. 092549, additional amount of $5,000 for truck and equipment replacement parts. 53 approve award contract with Barbado Nursery Corporation, furnish and deliver trees for the fall tree planting program. Just before approve amendment resolution R. 102526, additional amount of $1,382.72 for 1, 2025 Ford police intercept utility, paying a, a, all wheel drive vehicle for the fire department. We then have items for discussion by council, we have some best practices worksheet, uh, we have a public reminder, and the next day for council meeting. Start with the agenda review session on November 19th, followed immediately by a city council meeting on November 19th. Time called order, the meeting will be rolled off.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson is excused, councilmember Fleming is absent, councilmember Gaskins is absent, councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Here.
Council President Anderson?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act is complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice at the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the city hall, has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, Home Living. Could you please stand in period for the assembly?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Remain in remote silence, remembering our men and women throughout the entire world, who are putting themselves in arms' way, especially these delicate times. Thank you.
Councilmember Escobar? Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Madam City Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings, we have ordinances for discussion on second reading. An ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1020, handicap parking, Section 1020, 010, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, adding 101 Wright Place, 184 Fulton Street, and 10 Laurel Place. My fellow councilmembers, any questions, comments, or orders? Please prepare to open up the public hearing on this ordinance only, for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any member of the public wishes to speak on the ordinance, please approach the council by way of the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Seem none?
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
And number two is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 3, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 328, fee schedule, Section 328, 120, parks and recreation fees in regards to updates. To my fellow councilmembers, any questions or comments on this order? Okay, we're preparing to open up the public hearing on this ordinance. Again, it's up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance, please give your name and address for the record, maybe about two, five minutes, one time up.
Good evening, Charlie Pratt of Hills, Saddam Street, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, can you just tell us what is changing and why?
Council President, uh, the changes are, uh, to the actual fees of rent in like, uh, city parks and also some of the leads, uh, recreation. So it's basically, uh, just adjusting for the consumer price index, and then there's also a new piece that, um, non-city residents, uh, pay, uh, a slightly higher fee for use of state property than city residents. That's all, thank you.
Kind of how I think it can form, that the, uh, that's for groups, not for individuals, just for theater play?
That's correct, it's just for organizations.
Anyone else? Seem none?
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
We then have ordinances on first reading. Number one is ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 1020, handicap parking section, 1020, 010, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, adding 238 Towne Street and 456 Ferms and Avenue.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number two is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 17, zoning in regards to several proposed amendments.
We have the ordinance setting out Wednesday, November 19th, 5:30 p.m., Sunday, at 8:00. Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number three is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 16, land development code, in regards to several proposed amendments.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
And number four is an ordinance to amend supplemental advisory orders to the city of New Brunswick, Title 2, administration and personnel in regards to maximum development.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gastsaniata?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
We now have resolutions 1254. Uh, we have some work from explanation, uh, number six, Mr. Wallace. You know, it constitutes second one.
Yes, uh, the Council President, um...
Number six is a constitution increase.
Yep, we, uh, we've had a lot of change orders with this project, uh, the largest was a, uh, inclusion of sanitary sewer replacements, which were not in the original plan, and that was, uh, over $250,000, so that quickly pushed us over the 20% threshold for the project. Uh, we also encountered, uh, a lot of very loose but large shale, um, that was collapsing into the trench over large segments of Jones Avenue, uh, which made for a much wider trench, and then there was additional cost to remove all of that, uh, as well as the additional time to dig. Change order eight is for a galvanized service that was replaced that we encountered. Uh, change order nine is, uh, we found that Jones and Comstock, uh, 20-inch transmission main was not connected, uh, was connected to the, uh, the main on Jones Avenue when we actually dug the hole, uh, where our drawings, uh, dating back to 1961 indicated it did not. So that was a, that was a surprise, anytime we, uh, then work on the, the larger mains in the city, uh, we find a lot of valves don't work. Um, so we had to cut valves in, and that, that, that gets kind of costly to, to, to be able to isolate Jones and Comstock, and then, uh, create a separation between the new main and the transmission main.
Thank you. Should the meeting end, please tell us about numbers 10, 11, 12.
Certainly, Council President. So, first let me start off with number 12. Uh, so for the land development code, we are, uh, reworking and simplifying, but also adjusting upward a little bit our, uh, application fees and our escrow fees for land use and development applications, and, uh, we are, uh, adding some, uh, exemptions to the site plan ordinance. Some small things like additions to industrial properties, additions to commercial properties, uh, fences that for whatever reason weren't site plan exempt forever, but we have never required site plans for fences, uh, so things like that. Now for number Title 17, uh, we are continuing our process of updating zoning code with items from the, uh, reexamination report, a master plan update that happened this summer, as I mentioned earlier on, this would happen over, of course, many phases, this is, for all intents and purposes, Phase 2, um, and so we'll be looking to do that in maybe through, and Phase 3 and 4 earlier next year, deliver the, uh, the projects, the, the resolutions.
Thank you. Uh, come back to number 16. Mr. Mulryne, number 18, authorize corrective action plan, if you want it.
Yes, so this is the city manual, uh, the number before actually certified the annual audit for the city, which is for the prior year, and then the, the next number corrective action plan would be any corrective actions the city had to take in, in result of what the auditors, uh, would discover, minor, um, discrepancies that they reported on, and then we clarify later regarding the topics for affiliations, stuff like that.
Thank you. Number 26, the 32. Madam Clerk, why are we bringing you back?
Um, so for the first set, it's actually for two active liquor licenses, uh, for the current liquor license term, they would see the tax plan, so we're able to renew them. And then for the following seven, um, this is for an inactive liquor license, they would see the tax plan, so we're about to renew them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, should the meeting end for number 35? And then what for the Transportation Department, complete street plan?
Um, if you may recall that a few months ago, we applied for, to the NJTPA for, uh, their technical assistance in developing a plan that would, uh, allow us to develop projects, to support applications, uh, for, uh, sort of transit oriented, uh, transit village related projects. Uh, they graciously awarded us that assistance, and, uh, as a requirement of that, they asked us to put forth this, uh, resolution that we agreed to participate and be active participants in their, uh, process, and provide them with any support that we need to come around to enable, uh, the project to go through.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Valenti, number 39, we have the, uh, change order for Bebo Park, Bebo and Restroom renovations, that constitution increase, what happens?
Uh, well, structures roll does be, uh, specific to the gazebo, we found rod blocking, excuse me, the wood that's underneath everything, which, you know, and is blocking for the post, had to be replaced. Likewise, um, in, in the bathroom renovation, we encountered that the existing floor opened to reuse was out of level, I had to correct it, so it's a function of, uh, dealing with old structures, some of the hidden, uh, pleasure that we finally do that.
Thank you. And, uh, we're all in here? I'll come in for the, the change order for the library and group access ladder.
Yeah, that, um...
That's the one on the library, if you move...
Correct, yes, the, the initial design for ladder was done when the design of the roof replacement was done several years ago. We used that to formulate our original scope of work. The drawings are inaccurate, uh, the walls were actually hollow, not solid, blocking certain locations, so we had to redesign the, the access ladder for two reasons. One, the vertical, um, lift was such great, was so much higher, that we had to add a platform. It will require a certain amount of separation of platform and restroom to keep going up. In addition, that we had to come up with a whole new scheme to anchor the ladder onto what we thought was a solid block wall, too, was essentially a hollow... They call it, it, it's a special material to make elevator shafts, but it's not necessarily structural for ladder shafts.
Thank you. We have number 16 is a resolution regarding the Jersey State Immigration Trust Act. Councilmember number 12.
Senator, I have a, uh, something I'd like to say in general, I just wanted to start by saying that I respectfully report that government's body and our motion may be void at any time, regardless of whether it's agenda or not. However, up until now, we have acted with what ideally is professionalism and impact, reliving our colleagues to allow for impor decisions under the past practice of consensus. Had this practice been followed here, this would have been a more expedite procedure to provide the public with an answer to a matter at hand, and it would not have ended and been removed from the agenda last week. I also understand that practices change and evolve, I do not dispute or disagree with that, but I still currently disagree with this body voting our matters that look outside of jurisdiction and control. As councilmembers, we are always raising our personal letters of support and signing petitions on our own behalf. In fact, I found no compelling evidence in the document provided to us that indicates it being a directive or a law would change the operations inside our city boundaries. I do take great umbrage, however, with the statement in the document that New Brunswick should step up and take a leading role, when we have been doing that all along for our community, long before the ICA's leadership. I believe the city of New Brunswick has shown meaningful support, and is always taking a proactive stance under the strong leadership of Mayor Cahill to protect and keep secure our entire immigrant community, while remaining steadfast to inclusivity and diversity of all who form New Brunswick. An impactful show of leadership and support in action, not words of support and persuasion. I am also not aware of an instance where the New Brunswick Police Department has enabled any outside agency to work against the best interest of our community, but conversely, puts forward a strong presence of trust through outreach to enhance the daily life, safety and security of our most vulnerable population in Eastheim by assisting them to grow and flourish with education and opportunity. I trust the leadership of Deputy Sebo and Deputy Corvina to continue the same level of potential service, regardless of the ITAs of directive, law, or doesn't exist at all, and regardless of the climate outside the bounds of our jurisdiction. That they will foster an environment and act in such a manner that no immigrant, documented or undocumented, shall live in fear, again, in an impactful show of leadership and support in action, not words of support in resolution. I also trust and carry tremendous respect for the exceptional leadership in our state legislature with the Senate, with the Senate President's authority, custody, and law, and all who serve in the 17th district of which we sit. I trust them to make decisions based on facts with a comprehensive understanding of implication for the policy they create. It is my understanding that this bill has not moved due to lack of support, but for varying reasons along the way, including a lawsuit, potential consequences resulting, and adverse effects of funding restrictions that may impede current reforms protecting our undocumented community, and the consequences that have come essentially. I can only speak for myself when I say with confidence that I do not have, I am not positioned with better insight than our state legislature who is putting forward this bill, and I do not have additional information or more knowledge than they do, and they are ones who are writing it and presenting it. I would like to kindly ask my colleagues if they can maybe inform me, they may have more information than I do, and if, if you have, you know, better insight than our state legislature does on this, that you would please make me aware of it, because I'd like to know, so I can make a informed decision. And I just, I, I don't know how you reconcile the issues they're having when it's not support, but there are other issues that are quite hard to reconcile that, you know, with the entire state jurisdiction here, with, with our jurisdiction in the city of New Brunswick. And I also have great concerns that by voting on this resolution, our community may have expectations for change in the city of New Brunswick that, that just aren't going to happen because of the way we present ourselves now, the way that we take care of our community. So we're supporting a resolution that's not going, going to create any tangible change within the boundaries of our city. And if, if someone can again give me specifics on how that could change, I would love to hear one. So if my vote remains a no, it will not be on the gaps of diversity that make our city thrive with vibrancy, it will not be a no...
It is.
It will not be a no on the dignity and rights that every human being deserves. It would be a vote of confidence in our elected state legislative partners, Mayor Cahill, Chief Sebo, and the entire welcoming community of New Brunswick. A vote of confidence that we as a council can put forward meaningful resolutions that embody the heart of New Brunswick, which lies in our jurisdiction, to which we have a full understanding of content, context, consequences, and control. And I'll say that again, content, context, consequences, and control, that shall be governed within the power bestowed upon us as the elected body in the city of New Brunswick. I'm reserving my, my vote on it, I'm not voting right now, I, I am open to hearing, I want to hear from my councilmates, or to know the session about this thus far, and I would like to hear from residents of New Brunswick on what they feel is going to change in the city by the passage of this resolution. And, and then I will make it available.
Thank you.
Uh, so for me personally, uh, you know, I recognize that this is a resolution, this, it's a resolution in support. So it's not necessarily, uh, that we're looking to, you know, pass it ourselves, it's just that we, you know, there are, to your point, there are legislators that have put this bill up for, for votes, and there are people in Trump and everything actually supporting, if I'm not mistaken, our sending home, or supporting the passage of the bill.
Yeah, there is no law of support.
Right. So, so for us, for me personally, it's just, it's just adding my support, right, and, and asking this body to, to ask, uh, to provide that support for potential legislation that would protect me. The fear, in my opinion, and I think what you would hear from the public... The fear, in my opinion, and I think what you would hear from the public, is that with just the AGU or the Attorney General directed, the minute that there's a change in the Attorney General, that protection could go away. And this, at least for codify and providing at least that level of protection and provide our police officers and law enforcement with the tool of keeping our undocumented safe from, you know, any particular ICE activity outside of their, you know, inside of their country.
I have the loss of federal funding, if you consider our state authority, the vast investment the state legislature decides is appropriate, because I know that's a concern with the state right now, and funding is always important, and everything that we do do for our entire population.
Well, I'll answer that in two ways. We're not the only ones, not the only municipality that's supporting this. That's a foundation, right? So we're not at this alone. And number two, with the way that this particular legislation is acting, there is a threat of losing funding in every way. And so that is a threat that we're facing for our local public.
Okay, so you know, okay, that's fine. That's your opinion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't have anything to, I just have time. I continue to support this, and it feels quite an air of fact, you know, society, it must have been discussed, just a feeling, right? It is people, together people, regardless, and people do not decide to speak, their case may go to the same, right? And we will repeat the same mistakes that we have done as a society in the past, for the future. So there's a time when people have to take a stand, that people have to take a risk, get aware of some of the challenges that might arise for them, stay in silence and not supporting on my part is not an option.
Thank you. I'd like to say, first of all, I am not really one to expose a lot of resolutions for a lot of different things, especially when they're really not going to go anywhere. But what I've heard from people, adults, and mostly students, people that are afraid of things, now, I don't know if that's going to change, and if people are going to tell them not to be afraid and get right back to it and everything like that, but once the students and the children are involved and they're hurting, I think we can pass this resolution just to get it done. I don't know what this president is going to do. He's a very vindictive man, and he may come back and do something. But I think just for the fact, to give the people, and especially the children and the students, some sort of light, that they can be okay, and they'll do all right. So I think that's my census on it, and that's why I'm voting this. Anything else? Okay, we're about to open up the section on resolutions to the public. Again, if you have, give your name and address, just for the record, and tell us what item you're talking about, I will be able to follow along even better, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Dominguez, born and raised in New Brunswick, New Jersey. I am a Rutgers student, I am an organizer with New Labor, and I have three children in New Brunswick Public Schools at the moment. Um, yeah, the immigrant trust act resolution may sound just like some words to folks, but here in New Brunswick, it's going to make people feel as if their city is on their side. And just bringing in some context, there's already been some distrust between the community and the New Brunswick Police, not because the police did anything, right? The other day, we got a call from community members concerned that ICE was banging on their door three times in one day. When we showed up and tried to talk to folks, and we checked cameras, and together we figured out that it was the detectives of New Brunswick who just wanted to check their camera because they were trying to do investigations about something else. When we finally connected the detectives with that family, I stood there and I translated for folks and made sure that they knew that this had nothing to do with immigration, that we just wanted to see the cameras, but they wanted to see if a car drove by at a certain hour of the day. That's all they wanted to know. But guess what? By that time, the camera footage was deleted. It's too late. If the family would have opened up the door sooner at the first three knocks, then the detectives would have been able to get the footage they need and would have been able to communicate with folks and do their job and continue their investigation and keep our community safe. But the fact is, people feel unsafe. They feel unsafe. And so I believe this resolution and community orgs like myself and others spreading that word that, listen, city of New Brunswick is standing with you, right? We're passing this immigrant trust act resolution. It's not for a lack of support that this isn't passing statewide, right? Koflin has said his support at different times, we have different assemblymen and women and legislators saying that they support it, but it just seems like people are afraid of this retaliation that may or may not come, but we're a blue state. It's here, it's coming. He doesn't like us, he doesn't like New York, he doesn't like Jersey, he doesn't like Cali. It's coming. So the least we can do, even if it just sounds like thoughts and prayers, like words, to the folks impacted, it's nice to hear that community is standing with community, that your representatives and local governments stand with you. And it may make them feel more comfortable opening up to local law enforcement about different things. We've also heard from local educators that the bilingual program here in New Brunswick is having registrants at an all-time low. And I don't think it's because our community has had advancement in English overnight, I think it's because people are afraid to register for programs that may out them as immigrant families. And I think this resolution will make people more comfortable using those resources, interacting with police, and just interacting with our local government and resources in general. So I appreciate this being on the agenda, and I appreciate those of you who are supporting it, and I appreciate your questions and concerns about it, and I just think we definitely need to get this passed for our local community. So, thank you.
Oh, my name is Brandon Gilbo, I was just waiting for her to start. Sixty-eight Harvey Street, New Brunswick resident. I've got to say, in this debate, I feel that your response is honestly pure catalyst. We have spent nine months watching all of our political norms that we accept, oh, no, no, a president would never do that, be thrown out the window. Codification today, codification tomorrow, codification forever, baby. We need to work on getting things codified, codified, codified. We can't codify it here, right? But it is about leadership, right? It's about showing that most probably won't change here, right? We'll continue to work the way that we do. God bless us, we live in a town where our police are trying to hunt people down, right? But there are a ton of places where that is happening, right? Even in this state, it is happening. Children are getting taken from their schools. I know teachers who are telling me about it, crying about it, and to say to me that we're worried about federal dollars, I know we need the money, we all know we need the money, what are we going to do without it? Right? But if your belief is that, what happens if we lose the federal dollars? What happens if Donald Trump wants to walk through the streets and shoot somebody in the face tomorrow? Who knows? Right? But what are you going to do to stand against it? Right? Are you going to be a passerby and let things happen and say, well, I didn't want to do that because I didn't want exactly what is happening to happen? This is your chance to stand up. This goes for everybody in this room, anybody that's watching this. This is your moment to show that you care about the Constitution, that you care about your constituents, that you care about making an actual change, and goddamn it, if it doesn't move, we'll try and make it move, okay? I need you to understand, and I understand that fear. I need you to get past it, because we're all scared. It's a privilege to just start to be scared. That's a privilege. I've been starting to say for a decade, ten years, ten years, that this is where we would be. Many people have said it. They've said it was hyperbole, they've said we were being dramatic, and now, in this exact moment, cowardice is useless. I need everybody to stand up. And I'm, I'm, not sorry, it may feel directed, because it is, it's directed to you, and people that feel like it, because fear is natural, but we have to get past it. And if it does come, you know what we do? We have to band together. What's the, are we doing a giant food drive for SNAP people that's been sent out by New Brunswick? Yeah? New Brunswick City Council's doing a big food drive for SNAP?
They're very community organization.
Okay, are we, are we, are we actively as city council directly involved in that? Have any of you given out food to community members? Yeah, can I give a show of hands who's given out food to community members since November first started?
Part of my church.
Right, right. It's about standing up, you gotta represent us. Like, this is your chance, this is your chance to go national, make all the money you want, sell all the books you want, or at the very little, like, like, like the smallest amount, be influential in this community and stand up for people, and people know who you are and appreciate what you do for them. I don't want to come up here at recent of that city council meeting and have an attitude. I don't get paid to come here. I stopped working to come here, and I have been since last year when I started coming. So please, like, get past being afraid. We're all afraid, we're all afraid. The money's going to get taken, your rights are going to get taken, who knows? We gotta fight.
Just for clarification, I didn't say I was personally me worried about the funding. I was posing a question, how do you reconcile the funding that may be lost? That's one of the reasons why this hasn't passed into law as a state, but that's part of their reason. I was asking if anybody had a right to so, and I'm out of the backpack, so I don't want you to make this. I don't want it to sound like I was just worried about money. I was posing some of the issues that were told to me, they're all, you'd like to shout to and say.
Right. And again, this is not a direct attack on you, this is, you know, on the fear, the fear that it is, it's natural, you know?
I wanted to die on because I'm trying to understand, I want to get a better understanding of it, because there were no conversations on the council prior to this movement, you know, being brought to the floor. And I first saw the conversations, you know, past the council meetings, then I just appreciate you speaking about it again, and I would say...
And really briefly, if you look at the period of reconstruction in this country, what this country did was codify racism, and it was one of the, it took a hundred years to break it. So if we want to fix it, codify, figure out how to codify.
Hi, my name is Troy Chardier, Big Knop Piano. I live on forty-eight Stanton Street in South River, which is like about twenty minutes away from here. I just wanted to speak, obviously, on, in terms of the immigrant trust act resolution. I know that it was brought up a matter of jurisdiction within the city council, but I do want to highlight that a number of cities and counties, not a handful, a number actually came out and passed a resolution in support of the immigrant trust act. And of course, it's not something that's directly within their powers to pass and codify and, I guess, execute, right? But it is also part of their responsibilities to have, to use the leverages of their soft political power and to set the narrative and to broadcast a message to the general public in order to effect change, right? Yesterday, we saw a highly successful election of the mayor of New York City, you know, Mayor Zoran Hamdani, right? Mayor-elect specifically. Last year, he was on the streets being ignored every time he tried to ask somebody a question. He was not very popular. What happened was, is that in the following year, he was able to effectively reach and send out a message to the right people, and all of a sudden, he was extremely popular. He's on the level of celebrity right now, which goes to show you the raw power of being able to speak and use a platform to send out a message to effect political change, right? That's why I'm here, that's why all these people are here, because the more that you speak about an issue and the more that you broadcast it and popularize it, you put it in the public consciousness, and all of a sudden, it's a no-brainer that this thing should be passed, or it's a no-brainer that we should be doing X, Y, Z, or voting for a specific person, right? That's soft power, and that's part of the responsibilities of an elected official. So I also just want to specifically thank councilmember Escobar for putting through, through the impromptu vote a couple of sessions ago to put this on the agenda. I really do want to highlight that, because that was a massive thing that you did, and I am, you're a grateful boy, I think you're grateful for it too, right? And also, Council President Anderson and Council Vice President Castañeda, I am so sorry if I mispronounced that, thank you, for putting your words today, because that is so powerful and that is so critical. This act faces an uphill battle still, right? The Assembly and our state legislature is still hesitant to pass it, and I think a big reason for that is because they think it's not a popular issue right now. The Chief of Staff for Skatari, Cohen, right? Chief of Staff Cohen, when called about the immigrant trust act, said that it wasn't a popular issue with voters, that people are calling in about other issues such as medic, medical care, right? Which is important as well, right? But the fact of the matter is, is that we're seeing really scary actions being done against people who are undocumented in this, in this state, right? In this country. There was a warehouse raid in Avon up, like, last week. Four days ago, November first, a three-year-old and her parents were taken by ICE, and we don't know where they are. That's not just something that you can look off to the side and say, I can't do anything about it, right? Because that's why I'm here, talking to you guys about this. That's why everybody who is with me to talk about this trust act is here, because we feel the need to try to do something. And I feel that a city council has a lot more political leverage than we do, even if it's not something directly within their power. And once, if you guys pass this resolution, if you don't pass this resolution, we're going to continue pressuring the state legislature to pass this, and I tell you, every single name of every county and every city council that passed a resolution in support of this trust act is going to be listed to help us, to give us that backing. And New Brunswick's quite a name to throw alongside something like Princeton or Union County, right? So I just ask that you do the right thing today. Thank you.
My name is Jenny Pusaki, P-S-A-K-I, yes, it is the same spelling, but I pronounce the P. I'm from Cranbury, New Jersey, and I am also here in favor of the resolution in support of the immigrant trust act. You asked many questions about what is it that the town council can do. Well, there's several things. Among other things, the Constitution of the state of New Jersey says that every elected official has a responsibility to preserve the privacy as well as the safety of all of its citizens. We have noted that through three major raids, lots of smaller raids, that the privacy of our citizens is now in question due to the federal government. Yes, there was a raid in Avon up last Wednesday. Yes, thirty-six people were taken, and we believe that at least half of them were actually shipped out of New Jersey and sent to other states within forty-eight hours. There was a raid in Edison over the summer, where they sent drones in after the folks in the warehouse to try to find them in the corners. And then, of course, there's the smaller raids. I am a community social worker, however, last year, I was a social worker in South River in their elementary school and their middle school. I had students whose parents were born from other, in other countries, coming into my office every day crying. I had a nine-year-old boy say to me, why does President Trump hate my family? Well, then, two weeks ago, the next town over from where I am in Cranbury, in East Windsor, there was the McKnight School, where a parent was stalked after he dropped off his second-grade child, and then ICE followed him, and two blocks later, they captured him. Now, that's one family that isn't going to have their breadwinner come home, because all he was doing was dropping his child off at school. It is the responsibility of every municipality, of every elected official, to preserve the safety of its residents, and that's why this does matter. I do agree with you, but it affects the children, it's even more poignant. The last thing I'll leave you with is this. The Camden Center for Social Justice, about two months ago, sent letters out to students, students in high school and middle school, students as young as fourteen years of age, saying that they could be offered $2,500 if they would self-deport and convince their families to self-deport. And if they had friends who otherwise were in compromising positions with their status, they could convince them to self-deport too. Now, how is it that that information about their status was leaked out to the federal law enforcement? Every student in a public school is entitled to their privacy, including the status of their residency and their citizenship, and that does not keep them from getting their education. However, when schools are leaking that information out, or that information is going to federal law enforcement, suddenly, every single one of those students whose parents are from another country, or who themselves were born in another country, they are now vulnerable, and now they're in a dangerous situation, because our own constitution is not being followed, the New Jersey constitution is not being honored by federal law enforcement and protecting the privacy of those students. Please, consider this your responsibility, as well as the responsibility of the twenty other municipalities that have passed this, and the three counties that have passed it as well. Please, support the resolution for the immigrant trust act. Please, support the resolution for the Immigrant Trust Act.
Hi, can you hear me? My name is Reeve Duncan. I'm actually a resident of Highland Park. So an outsider to this community in some sense. Highland Park did pass the resolution, so did Edison, and many, many other towns and boroughs. This is actually not that big of a task. And it's not that big of a risk to take. I completely agree with the points that were made about this being rather cowardice, not to do this. This is within your jurisdiction. Taking care of the well-being of the people in your town is well within your jurisdiction. And this falls into that. You've heard from so many people here about the pain and suffering that is happening, the kidnapping. Children are worried about going on field trips. They're not able to participate in all the activities that are being offered through the school system because their parents are worried. It's scary. So this is within your lane. It's cowardice not to do it. Trump is gonna be way more worried about New York, but Romney and California, I don't think he's coming after New Brunswick right now. I think that the other point is that bullies are depending on this sort of compliance and fear. They're depending on that. That's what drives them. That's what gives them the power. But you also have power. You have power to make a difference. This is your privilege right now in sitting around this table, to take a stand. And thank you to those that have said that they will vote in favor of this. It's really not a big ask. It's not. Just do it.
Good evening. My name's Lindy Stork. I live at South Parkville Park in New Brunswick. I'm not gonna repeat everything that everybody already said in support of passing this resolution. But I would like to point out a couple of things. It's very true that in many ways, you know, the rule of law seems to have gone out the window. A lot of those people in Avonel had valid work permits. Valid work permits. They were at work. Using their valid work per... And when they showed it, it was totally disregarded. These are people that came here seeking asylum, which is not only a right in the United States of America, that's an international right. They were following the process. They tried to show paperwork that they have their date for their asylum case to be heard. And the process includes, they have to wait, but then they can take out a work permit while they're waiting for the case to come up. And that's what they did. And for their trouble, they got carted off to what's essentially jail. They were detained. They can't even get out on a bond until their case is heard. The conditions are horrendous in the places where they are detained. And then many of them were already moved, just like that to Louisiana. By the time their families are looking for them and trying to visit or trying to support or trying to get a lawyer, and they're in Louisiana now. This is insanity. And I wanted to also speak as a New Brun... some more local cases that people might not be aware of. But this is happening, not, you know, not any huge raid like that in New Brunswick. We don't have any warehouses, I guess, big enough. But we have, I mean, yeah, ICE is here. ICE is here. I sat on the front steps with a woman who sent her husband and oldest son off to work in the morning. And the husband is detained on the way to his car around the corner, hauled off. The son is trying to, who is a citizen, is trying to record. And they're telling him that he's obstructing justice. He said, "But that's my dad. I have to know what you're doing to him, where you're taking him." And, you know, all of a sudden, he just goes into work. These are not criminals. They use information, if they can find any information. And often, they have more information on the people that are following the legal steps that they're supposed to do. You know, that's why they have their information, because they go to their check-ins. That's the other thing. People are being picked up at their check-ins, you know? But those two days in a row, a few weeks ago, where I sat with that woman and then the very next day, right around the corner, and also very near my house, you know, with another guy. We saw his friend taken away. Who was it, like, a... Been here 30 years, active member of the community. You know, his kids are in the schools. He was a soccer coach. And he's gone. Just like that. I mean, it's insanity. If you think that people are not afraid, people are afraid. People are afraid. Of course, they are afraid. How would you not be afraid? When you think, when you see that a legal permit to work is not being respected and that you can be snatched away from your place of work, hauled off to a jail, and then shipped to another part of the country? That's terrifying for their families. And that, to live with that kind of uncertainty and to actually have to consider, you know, possibly giving up a whole life that you have to, to, just because, to go back to something that you know is not good but is like unknown, instead of not ever knowing here what could happen? You know, none of these people that this happens to expected, when they went to work like any other day, that they wouldn't come home. And their families certainly didn't expect that they wouldn't either. And it's tragic.
Anyone else on the resolution? Good evening, once again, Charlie Crowe, Adam Street, New Brunswick. New Brunswick today. I have to start by asking about 18, the corrective action plan. It says in the resolution that it's attached, but it's not attached for the public. Can you tell us what's in your corrective action plan?
Yeah, there were two items in the audit. I don't know if it's unattached yet, but there were one deposit that was returned over the 40-hour time frame. I think it was a day or two later than that. And then there was another item of the deposit. Couldn't be reconciled at the time the auditor was there, but it was later found to be.
I will reiterate my concern about the auditor, Samuel Klein and Company. They were, of course, the auditor for the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund when all the, let's just say, the house of cards collapsed. And I'm more worried about the stuff that they might have missed rather than the stuff they caught. Thank you for answering my question. Let's get to 16, the Immigrant Trust Act resolution. First of all, we only have four of the seven council members here today. I heard Mr. Ferguson's absence was excused. Any word on where Mr. Fleming or Ms. Gaskins are tonight?
I don't know. All that is, as our form, we have four. So already, it's a majority of four to be able to pass any resolutions, right?
Right. And so to be clear, if the vote is three to one...
It passes.
It passes? Okay, I see your attorney shaking his head. Okay. So, that said, it sounds like there are three favorable votes for this. I hope that you will do the right thing and pass it. But I also did want to address Councilman Lucicor Ludwig's hesitation. I know, you know, I've known you for over a decade. And I would respectfully ask you to put aside national politics, put aside your, you know, connections to whatever local state officials you know, and think about the residents of New Brunswick and some of the things you've heard from residents and non-residents tonight. I would be interested to hear what the police chief and the deputy chief think of this policy. Having, you know, I know he's only been the chief for a couple of years, but between two of them, they've got decades of experience on New Brunswick police, both before and after the immigrant trust directive. May I ask, have any of the council members spoken to the leadership of the police department and gotten their take on whether the immigrant trust directive has been good and whether it's something they would like to see continued and/or codified?
Yeah, I've spoken to them both, but I don't wanna get into the immigrant trust act with anything like that too much. I want them to do their job and make sure that they're non-cooperatives as much as they can by law with ICE.
Understood. I just think they would have a valuable perspective. So I don't know which, if any of you have brought that subject up to them. But it's another reason it would be good for them to come here and be able to weigh in when appropriate, when you think it's appropriate. I know some of us have been asking for that for as long as I can remember. But, yeah, I think, you know, certainly, before you take a no vote on this, I would talk to the leadership of the police department, see what their take is. I also think that, you know, we've heard a number of situations that are really troubling, that are going on right now. So I think it's important to recognize this is a nuanced issue. And really, what advocates are asking for tonight is just to make sure things don't get worse, right? We're asking for a very low bar here. We're asking for your support in maintaining the limited protections that do exist. The reality is, we need to do way more than this. We need, as a nation, to build the movement to abolish ICE. We need to build a movement to end private prisons altogether. We shouldn't have them for immigrants or for citizens or for anyone. We should be changing our justice system in a way that is going to protect people. And this is one small step to start it. So I truly hope that New Brunswick will send a message with a unanimous vote tonight in support of Resolution 16, so we can move on and take this to the next level and do the big things that we need to do as a city and as a society to protect all of us and make sure we have our rights under this constitution. Thank you.
Hi, April McClos, 153 Saddam Street, New Brunswick. I've obviously heard from a lot of people who've shared a lot of, I think, very compelling reasons why the council should pass this resolution tonight. And I think, you know, we've heard, not just tonight, but many other occasions, that people in our community are not feeling safe. And so whatever other steps, you know, the local government, the police, others might be taking to try to help people feel safe right now, it clearly is not enough. We need to do more if the goal is for people to feel safe in their community. And if making people feel safe is not reason enough and you need a greater reason to, you know, to believe that passage of this resolution would affect concrete change within the boundaries of New Brunswick, I think that the example that Mr. Mingus provided earlier about fear causing people to not open their door for local law enforcement for something that could potentially be, you know, helpful to our community, maybe even helpful to those residents if that cooperation had occurred, I feel like that's a clear enough example of how, you know, even if the humanness of not wanting people to be afraid isn't sufficient for making policy decisions, that helping people feel safe and participating as part of this community benefits the whole community. So I hope that that is reason enough to vote in favor of this. And then I feel like I do also have to make note of, you know, comment of an earlier speaker, Ms. Psaki, about a recent ICE deduction in East Windsor, outside of the McKnight Elementary School, which is the school that I went to. And I'm just, you know, thinking about myself when I was a child. What would I do if my mom dropped me off at school and I never saw her again? And, you know, that would change the course of my life. And so I asked that all of you think about, you know, if you were a child, when you were a child, what would happen to you if your parents take you from you and you never saw them again?
Just a little louder, it's over.
A little louder, okay. I would also like to call on you guys to pass the Immigrant Trust Act resolution. I think what really stood out to me is that you're talking about being scared of... Or I walked in a little late, but was the funding mentioned, right? Like, the cost?
There was one of the issues, like, why the state doesn't move forward and having to reconcile that.
No, completely. I understand. But I think it's notable to see that that is a future risk, right? That is a future risk. ICE in New Brunswick, in every area here, is a present risk for people. It isn't like, I think a lot of times when we talk about issues and debate, there are people in the present time being impacted by those same issues. To not do something for a present risk, for a present danger, because there is a future risk involved? How, and I wrote this down, and I wrote it down, I was gonna say it later, but when is it gonna be enough? When? Like, how many more people need to be taken? How many people have died? Like, when? When? It doesn't have to happen here? Who does it have to happen to for it to ever be enough? I just don't understand how, when is it enough to maybe take a risk, you know? Like, if you go out in the community, it's happening to this day. It's happening to children. It's happening to mothers. You, you need to understand that it's not a decision that you can sit on for weeks. I understand there's funding risks. I understand that these are people's lived realities. And there is so much privilege in being able to sit with that information and not understand that people are living in fear. There's also, like, the government shutdown, people are losing their benefits, their access to, like, childcare. What are those people gonna do if they need help? How are they going to be able to survive in a society that doesn't wanna protect them? I'm a college student at Rutgers. Yesterday, I thought we had some wins. So to come here and to see people come after work, I mean, I couldn't say a lot of us work, you know? To come here after work and see after week after week, it's different. When you go out there, you see what's happening, and then you come here. And it's not even anger at this point. It's, it's happening. And I just, I really do call on you to pass this resolution and really acknowledge that we don't come here just because we wanna, like, make an issue. It's because it is an issue. It's, it's an issue right now. And I want you to consider that issues are people's lived realities. Every time, there's people's grandmothers' mothers. And, I mean, you could say, like, we're not under atta... I think that's the thing, right? Like, we're not under attack, but we are. Our neighbors are. And even if you speak up these days, you are. So I want you to consider that the more time you take on this, there are people who are affected with that time. And that, as public representatives, I, I don't think it's... I think you owe people here answers. Because people deserve to feel safe and they deserve to feel like, actually, especially going to food banks and food pantries with government shutdown. Can you imagine starving and you feel scared to go and ask for help? I don't know. I guess I've been in situations in my life where it's... I agree with April, who spoke before me. It's just hu... It's a part of being human. And I really call on you guys to pass this resolution. Or maybe honestly, see, like, be there when it's happening to see the people who it's happening to, so you can understand why there's so many people here who come with, not even just logic or pleas, but like emotion. Thank you.
Anyone else on the resolutions?
I just wanna thank everybody.
I just want to thank everybody for the time. Thanks.
All right. Yeah, sorry, I got late, got caught in traffic. Just wanted, because it was my impression, oh, my name is Carlos, it was my impression because Councilman Castaneda was not here last time, then when he come back, the votes, the votes were there, it was easy to come in, pass the resolution, and we can all go home happy. I don't know what happened between then and now, you know?
He shut up.
Yeah. Right. So I'm assuming that we're still with the same energy of passing this in favor of the ITA, right? Is that so? Okay. Just want to make sure, I got here late, that's what I'm saying. All right? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. The resolution is closed. We will move to the resolution.
So now I just, I just want to thank everybody for the time. I don't believe, to me, it's not power, it's to want to be informed when I'm making decisions. I think it's my duty to have to be informed and for me to feel comfortable in doing that. And, I mean, obviously, sometimes it's this old procedure, and this, this deserves a lot more human kindness than I just giving it up front. And I appreciate what everybody says. Everyone's one thing.
Okay, so the public comment on the resolution is now closed. We will move the resolution.
Move the resolutions.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Lovey?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Any discussion by the council? First of all, I'd like to congratulate the New Brunswick Rotary Club for their 105th anniversary. They're hanging out here tomorrow night, and the city has a resolution for them. So I'd like to thank everybody who came out to vote, one way or the other, at least to come out and vote, show that you actually care. The vote is gonna be a little bit closer. And we'd also like to congratulate, uh, New Brunswick's own Dr. Dale Faldo, as our current governor. He is a New Brunswick guy, he's a long gone, uh, I can't remember his name, so congratulations on that.
Now, I also wanted to congratulate, um, Lieutenant Governor Blacktop from Dale Faldo, too. He is a tremendous man, he's done so much work for the city of New Brunswick. He's well educated, he's very intellectual, he's a well distinguished academic, and more so, he has always committed himself to public service in one form or another, and truly had an impact, um, in our town and beyond. And I just wanted to congratulate him, say his proud day for the city of New Brunswick.
I do, as the, uh, please, I'm to the New Brunswick County Board, there was two who made, um, and I approached, uh, City Council, and two particular questions that I asked to research and I spoke into, uh, number one, whether there was a training component that a law, that a enforcement officer gave to the vote group, and number two, whether there was a need for the police director to sign off on, uh, new hires. And so I'm going to pass it over to Assistant City Attorney Joe Cantonese to guide us with the, uh, what can bound and what can, uh, determine.
This is the county president, uh, the president. The parking authority is W. on the state statute, and the, hey, I'm, 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 I'm a client of this, that the chief of police or chief of law enforcement officer, I guess the term is to determine eligibility, and report that for the parking authority, I'm stating that there is a procedure in place to do that. And then, the training is, it's not our purview, but my understanding from talking to the parking authority, that there's a training requirement in the statute, and that training requirement is fulfilled through the field training program. There's a question for the law, probably, if you can answer in real detail about the parking authority. It's my understanding they have full training program. They train, they train the parking enforcement officers.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, we are starting to open up, do you have other comments, questions in the public? You are...
Best practices.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, sorry. Best practices worksheet?
Uh, we've got an affidavit.
Best practices worksheet?
Are you in public comment or are you in the background?
Best practices worksheet.
So, members of council, the, uh, our CFO, Mr. Moore, has required the statute, has completed the city best practice, responsible status, uh, air nationally, I reviewed within the agreement forward, uh, the city has once again, uh, amended that fulfillment of requirements, uh, a couple extra points there as well, and, uh, please report that.
Thank you. Again, we can now, now have the public comment, you'll have almost five minutes, one time up. Give your name and address for the record, and, uh, next.
Eric Skier, Jamesburg. How much, if any, additional funding is the New Brunswick Police Department receiving for the Arrive Together Program?
I can, uh, I can answer that. So, that is a fairly abundant program, the New Brunswick does not receive direct funding for that program, the New Brunswick does receive the benefit of the social workers involved in that program through the county program on a scheduled basis.
Right. So they do receive money through the, the, um?
The, the police department?
Yes.
Does not, does not receive any direct funding for that program. The beneficiary of that program, that's administered through the county.
Good. Is the police department and the city council satisfied with the level of coverage that the Arrive Together Program is providing to its citizens?
There really is no opinion satisfied or not satisfied, because that program is designed for a very limited scope. If there's a, if there's a sense of violence, if the government's, um, the program's not equipped.
Okay, I get it. Let me just not make the same mistake I made last time and open up questions and then all my time gets eaten up. All right. So the Arrive Together Program and police departments in general, they need funding in order to increase the amount of coverage, okay? We don't even know unless you can state right now how many days a week, how many shifts a week that program is operating, okay? So if we can get those answers, and then if you can say that you're satisfied, or not satisfied, or that you want to increase it, or keep it the same, then we can figure out ways to prevent tragedies.
Thank you.
Brandon Gillibow, 68 Harbor Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. I just wanted to follow up with you. So you said you talked to the New Brunswick Parking Authority on their training practices, right?
I said that I asked the city attorneys.
Yeah, I just, no, I'm not, no, I'm not coming for you, like, I just, yeah.
Yeah, the record's straight.
Yeah. Uh, because I did work at Blacktop, and I think you may have heard me mention this before, uh, and the New Brunswick Parking Authority is probably one of the most corrupt bodies in the city. I mean, I watched them choose who they give tickets to, I watched them pull over and admire cars that are legally parked and not ticket them. I have footage of one of the officers threatening to ticket me while allowing a couple to do the exact same thing that I was doing. This, this same officer, whose name I have somewhere, who has harassed me on more than one occasion. They are problematic. I have had, I, I don't have a ticket on me, but I can send a picture of it to whoever would like to see, of them issuing a ticket that had to be canceled because it was wrong. Because they don't know how to do their job enough to at least run the plates and see if it has a permit? Oh, it does have a permit. Oh, it's outside of the time to assign tickets, they're still assigning them. So there is some sort of disconnect, right? And there has to be, and I, I would like to know if somebody could please inform me when the next actual meeting is for the New Brunswick Parking Authority, because I would like to know, um, how they have as much power as they do in this town, and how do we slow that down? That's for all y'all, really, because they have too much power in this town. This is not the first time I've said it. It affects our commerce, it affects our residents, right? It is a problem. So I understand we want to make money, right? We want to be Nashville, right? And make millions of dollars off of parking a year, right? But how does that benefit us when it's residents that are paying $2,000 a year in parking tickets? Just, just like, like legit, like, if we can, if somebody could tell me where the next New Brunswick Parking Authority meeting is, how I can verbalize that with, you know, and speak with somebody to actually get some change for the residents? Do I need to come up to that meeting with 70 people so we can say it's a real problem? Do I need to reach out to the business owners of New Brunswick who are dealing with it? Should I look, should we walk up and down George Street and see how many people, how many businesses have closed? Sorry.
I was gonna say, if you go on the website, they do have those sales.
Which, 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 which website? Because I tried to find the stream last meeting, and I couldn't even find the stream, streaming of this meeting.
I saw it on the New Brunswick Parking Authority website.
It's right, right, yeah? Okay. I just, will, will you be there?
What's that?
Will you be there?
I will be there unless I'm other place to be.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not, just checking, you know? I, I know I come up here with a lot of heat sometimes, you know, but it's, you know, all people, I'm just trying to get to, I hope, the same place that we're all trying to get, where everybody isn't paying hundreds of dollars in parking tickets because we have a parking authority that's, we only, where's, do we know where the money goes from the parking authority? Does it come back into the town?
The parking authority is a separate individual, independent.
So when we pay our parking tickets?
And they came there, and then they also give a donation to the city.
So basically?
There's a portion of those to the city.
So we're paying to get a donation. Uh, do we know what that amount was last year?
I don't have that.
Right. So you don't even know how much money they gave us last year? And I've literally stood in line with multiple people paying thousands of dollars in parking tickets. Come on, y'all.
We can be there, we can be here with that.
Yeah, I, I, I hope so.
On the website, probably.
But why don't you guys have any idea?
Idea?
Like, why are you, I, I mean, I don't...
There's a lot of information.
I'm just responding with your, the way you just said that, I'm responding it with the same way you said it. It's on their website. Well, I'm double checking with why our, our city attorney didn't, the initial response is, it's on their website, so, I, I appreciate you letting me know when the next meeting, because y'all know I will be here. So, you know, I asked if y'all knew, you could just simply say, sorry, we don't know, that's our bad. Don't give me the attitude about it, bud, that's not necessary.
Sure, I'm sorry, I know.
I mean, if that's saying passive attitude as well, because that goes, I don't need the microphone, Steve, I do still have my time, just to be clear.
Thank you.
Like, that's not, there's no need to ever have that level of condescension.
I don't have the hand.
There is condescension, but it's okay to act as if it was not.
Thank you.
Hi, April McGlaughlin, 143 Sedan Street, New Brunswick. First, I just want to thank all the council members that voted in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act. It was something that was heavily called for by the community, and I appreciate that you took action. And I think you saw what the palpable sense of relief that there was when you did take that action. And, you know, it's, uh, very important to be responsive when the community tells you what they need, and especially on topics that are so emotionally fraught for so many people. And to bring up another rather emotionally fraught topic that people have spoken with you about regularly at these moodings, and I'm sure in others' contexts as well, is now been, I think, almost three months since the police killing of Deborah Terrell. And I have not heard anything from members of the city council or any other aspect of the city government about any changes to protocol, anything that the police department or the city intends to do or do differently. Can you tell me about anything?
We can't comment on that, because apparently they have all the ground.
I'm, I'm asking you to comment on the, on that case, but moving forward.
We have talked to the police, they're working on different things to do. That's all I can say.
Do we have a timeline for when we might be able to be informed of what the police may or may not do?
I don't, I don't, I don't want to, we do a face or anything like that, so I don't know.
Could you commit to asking them for a timeline?
I don't think I would ask them for a timeline, but I would always ask them about how we're doing, what are we doing, things like that.
Right. I, I think there's a lot of people that are still very much waiting for action from the city, and just hearing over and over again, we're thinking about it, we're talking about it, without any specifics of what you're, what anyone is thinking, or what specific solutions are being discussed. I hope you can understand that leaves people, to put it mildly, incredibly unsatisfied with their local government's response to a tragic and, I think, avoidable occurrence, that we need to take action and do something different if we don't want it to happen again. And I'm sure that all of us in this room can agree that we don't want that to happen again to anyone else. But, you know, just like with the Immigrant Trust Act, you, you know, the feeling isn't enough, you do have to do something. And I think there's a lot of people that are really eagerly awaiting what it is that the local government will actually take responsibility to do here. I would really appreciate if you could ask for a timeline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Doris Elliott, and I do intend to run for city council. It is a disgrace to sit here, to see Rebecca to get up to leave after she voted for this act. You, Emmanuel, don't know the parking people's, uh, what, what did you write beginning?
Uh...
The way they need. That's sad.
How much money they paid last year?
It's sad. And, and she's right. Then you come and you can't tell us nothing about Deborah Terrell. But yous can all sit up here, you get with Blacktop, you two, I watch you two, and TK, you're sitting here, and your buddy, he looking up at Silly. That's disrespectful. It's disrespect to me and every citizen in this community. And I hope and pray everybody is watching. And like I said before, we cannot get any worse. We have to challenge these seats. These seats have never went challenged. That's why they're doing what they're doing. The police, uh, the police commissioner, or whatever you want to call him, he's supposed to be here, he's never here, because we never challenged them. Come on, New Brunswick, wake up. Let's put these feet to the fire. Stop because, oh, they voted for this and that, so we gonna give them their seat back. It don't work like that. This is a disgrace, and I hope and pray everybody is watching. They couldn't even tell us your name, we, what day the parking authority goes on, come on. Couldn't even give them their email address. I sat here, I watched, I watched all of you, and your head is tooted up to the end. It's, it's all on film. This is a disgrace, I feel bad. And I've been in New Brunswick my whole life, my whole entire life. Yeah, I'm great in Calgary, just like you. So what do you say? You should, you shouldn't, you should build, yeah, I know. Okay. Fine.
Good evening, Council. Charlie Cradaville, I'll start by stating for the record, the New Brunswick Parking Authority Board of Commissioners is scheduled to meet December the 17th, 5:00 p.m., 106 Somerset Street, in the sixth floor conference room. There's a good chance I'll be there, probably Mr. Castaneda, probably Mr. O'Donnell, who tapped into, and if we're lucky, some of the board members. Lately, some of them have been taken to calling into the meeting remotely, even though that courtesy is not extended to the public. So we've got to go navigate the traffic, get to that place, but board members don't necessarily have to do that. The chairman can run the meeting from Florida if he wants. Regarding the need for the police chief to certify... into, and if we're lucky, some of the board members. Uh, lately, uh, some of them have been taken to calling into the meeting remotely, even though that courtesy is not extended to the public. So we've gotta go navigate the traffic, uh, get to that place, but board members don't necessarily have to do that, the chairman can run the meeting from Florida if he wants. Regarding the need for the Police Chief to certify the eligibility of the parking enforcement officers for New Brunswick, through you from Mr. Cantonese, can he confirm that certification is supposed to be in writing, correct?
Don't you saw?
No, it's, it's specifically in the statute. Mr. Cradaville is fully aware of what the statute says. Um, it's in, it's in writing, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so when I filed my Oprah request and I was told no records exist, does that mean that they never got the eligibility certifications, or that they destroyed them or lost them? If they were in writing, shouldn't they be on file? Have you, uh, Mr. Cantonese, have you seen them?
No, it's, uh, it would be the Parking Authority's responsibility to give you that if they have those records available.
And so if they don't have them available, and they've said as much, is it fair to assume that they have not been following the law that says they're required to have these certifications in writing?
Okay, I'm not gonna sue them.
Are you even asking? Please.
I, I would ask that some follow-up take place, because I've requested them in good faith, hoping to see them and see that the law was being followed, and, you know, the response back was, no records exist. So, I'm concerned that every single parking enforcement officer has not achieved the statutory requirements to be a parking enforcement officer. If it says somebody has to certify in writing they're eligible, and there's nothing in writing certifying their eligibility, I think it's beginning to be clear that what I've, uh, asserted is actually correct, and that there is a, a problem at the Parking Authority. I also, um, you know, as Councilman Castaneda knows, have been inquiring about training, and have not gotten a response to my August Oprah request. Several issues of importance, so I'll move on. Fire headquarters, any update on when we are gonna say where the new fire headquarters is gonna be, or have a plan to, to do it?
Still working on it.
Okay. Any update on the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund? This is, I mean, it is a fact that they fired their entire staff. Um, can anybody comment on the status of that entity?
They're, oh. Yes, I'm pretty happy.
Okay, another early departure.
Respectfully so.
Okay. Deborah Terrell's killer, Hostway Plaza, active, on duty, suspended, pending, what, what's the status?
As far as I know, he's below the force.
Active, or, you know, paid leave, administrative leave was my understanding, but I'm asking for an update, does nobody know?
No, I'm sorry, I don't know. Now, for the respectful answer, it's each and every other type of test. He's still employed by the City Police Department, we don't comment on personnel issues.
Okay, well, well, I, I hope that, uh, the council members will begin to start asking the questions that I've been asking, whether it's about the JIF, whether it's about the Parking Authority, or whether it's about this terrifying fatal incident that our Police Department was responsible for. Um, you know, you've essentially taken a position that you can't comment on it, you won't invite the Police Chief to the meeting, and you won't even comment on potential policy changes, uh, that don't even touch on the incident itself. So I think that that's a problem, and, uh, you know, speaking of problems, you only have three council members, so, isn't it true that the council can't adjourn the meeting without a quorum? There's only three of you here, how are you gonna adjourn the meeting without a quorum?
There's a public comment now, so, we got to, we need to get through the quorum.
The council can adjourn by the rule of necessity from the rules, uh, the rules of order. Uh, you had a quorum at the start of the meeting, your business, all the matters that were voted upon without leaving, and, because you have three now, the rule of necessity that the quorum is the three, you make your vote, you adjourn the meeting.
So three's a quorum now.
The meeting has to start with a quorum of the council, which is four. You adjourn the meeting, now you can adjourn with the three.
Okay, well, in the future, I think we need to have better attendance from our council members, and, you know?
I don't have that day of the best of the day.
Well, obviously, not good enough if we have less than half the council here, it's only seven, seven oh six. You know, uh, you only have two meetings a month, we need to do better, all of us. I'm, I'm gonna keep showing up, let's have the council show up, too.
Anyone else for the public comment? Seeing there?
Second? Councilmember Sephora Lovelace? Yes. Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Seeing there?